For Monday, April the 11th, it's three o'clock. So we'll start with the land acknowledgement. And the town of Innisville acknowledges that we are meeting on Treaty Seven territory, the ancestral and traditional territory of the Blackfoot Confederacy, Kanai, Pecanee, Sixseka, as well as the Sutina First Nation and Stony Nakota First Nation. We acknowledge that this territory is home to the Matee Nation of Alberta, Region Three, within the historical Northwest Matee homeland. We acknowledge the first, the many First Nations, Matee and Inuit who have lived in and cared for these lands for generations. We are grateful for the traditional knowledge keepers and elders who are still with us today, and those who have gone before us. We make this acknowledgement as an act of reconciliation and gratitude to those whose territory we reside on. So we'll go into item number three. Any additions or deletions from the agenda? No? Could I please have somebody make a motion to adopt the agenda?
I was actually gonna, I was gonna add one. It's okay.
Yes, for sure.
Do you want me to tell you what it's about? Yeah. So I was gonna add bylaws, 1140. I think it's policies and bylaws 1140 on the agenda.
Okay, where would you like to add that in, CEO Becker?
Remember, Councilor Highstead, 5.3, Council of Ministries.
Okay, yeah. Okay, could I please have someone adopt the agenda as amended?
Mayor Barkley, I would make that motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
Thank you, Councilor Wing, all in favor. Okay, thank you. And we will move into the regular council meeting minutes of 4.1. If anybody doesn't see any changes or any omissions in that, please have someone make a motion to adopt those a minute, adopt those minutes.
I'll make that motion, Mayor Barkley.
Thank you, Councilor Maseros, all in favor. Thank you. And then 4.2, the Agenda and Priorities Committee meeting from April the 4th. Need a motion to adopt those, please.
I'll move those minutes, Mayor Barkley.
Thank you, Councilor Bates, all in favor. Great. We will move on to 5.1 and the CEO report with CEO Becker.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. As attachments to this report is information regarding the, the, community safety and wellbeing plan, request for quotation, as well as the Edmonton Hydrogen Conference, conference information. So as you can see, there's several recommended motions for council consideration. A little bit more detail in the report, council. Council last meeting at the AMP meeting talked briefly about potential having a Realtor developer engagement in the near future. This type of engagement occurred approximately three years ago, I'd say, and it was quite beneficial to just to share information from the town, but also receive information back from the Realtors that served Innisville and the area, as well as developers, mainly housing developers, but there's been, there's also some commercial developers as well. Again, as a good engagement, I'm just looking for council formal direction as per this conversation to have this engagement. Right now, as the administration is rolling out on their 2022 work plans, likely would be appropriate for administration to come back to you with this engagement or any other engagements to see how that fits in with our current work plans, because it is, we just want to make sure we're meeting your expectations on the priorities. We're getting to that level where we need to have some of that detailed discussion. But again, the engagement itself is quite beneficial. Just moving on, there's also a brief conversation regarding the Hydrogen Conference, which has taken place in Edmonton, April 26th to 28th. The details of the conference is attached for your information. With that, it's outside the scope. If you wanted the CEO, myself, to attend the conference, which I certainly would jump at that opportunity, it would be out of scope of my professional development budget and looking to see if you still wish to proceed and have me attend. There's a value of $300, $400 in approximate that would be required to come from contingency based on if you feel it's appropriate. Just, um, it's part of the meeting correspondence or some, there's some minutes in the correspondence from the Police and Safe Community Committee minutes. Councilor Maseros, Councilor Highstead spoke about this at the last meeting. A little more specifically to their comments. The committee is, has taken council's advice on looking at a policing engagement, which is a public education session held for the community in the near future, just regarding what is being planned or looked at, considered by the government regarding the Alberta Police Service. And the committee recommended that we proceed, so it's kind of back to you, council, if you wish to advance this public engagement. A draft itinerary or agenda that administration proposed would be something similar as a welcome from the mayor, welcome from the chair, Chair Milley. Put an invite to Soul Gen's office, invite to the Federation's office, hopefully for attendance, and then whatever is not there, we had feel the void through, through probably manager Leith and myself to fill some of that, some of those gaps with more detailed on the Price Water House Cooper reports. So we're asking for council to consider moving that process forward as well. Along with that, within the council's 2022 budgets, as per the recommendation of the Policing and Safe Communities Committee, there was a recommendation of allocate $20,000 within the 2022 budget, which council approved. Attached to this report is a, the draft RFQ to look at the market, to submit based on a scope that was developed and slightly amended by, by the committee. And back to you, council, and not so much worrying about the wordsmithing in the, in RFQ will still do a comb through and, and filter it out to some of our state, probably the prime prevention network for review before we address it to the market for submission. But the committee, I believe, supported, or they did support the RFQ in the process, looking for council final evaluation as well as approval if you think they're appropriate. Again, administration is not providing timelines at this point, again, somewhat to the other work plans. When can this process take place? Because it is a highly engaged plan, pulling in stakeholders to pull data and start to develop some sort of action according to the data that is being formulated. Lastly, as part of the Police and Safe Communities Committee, it's, it's in play already, not looking for council approval, but there is a public survey taking place right now through the support of the town communications. And the deadline is this Friday, looking for community inputs to help the RCMP and the committee establish their, their 2022 into 2023 annual priorities. And that's really it, Mayor and council. If there's any questions, but a few recommendations in other areas for your consideration.
All right, thank you very much. So maybe we'll start at the, with the Realtor developer. If somebody want to give administration direction that we move forward with that engagement, I know last term it was certainly beneficial, and I think don't need to do it right away, but maybe in June sometime, it might be beneficial to have a gathering and we can do a presentation on the town and what's going on with the town with our active strategy and strat plan and just some of the other exciting things that are taking place.
Mayor Barkley, may I ask one question before I, before I make that motion? Would we include some of the landowners immediately surrounding the town that wouldn't be considered professional developers, but are just that are folks that have big pieces of land that they're kind of wondering what to do with next? So would we include that group?
Mayor Barkley, it comes from, I certainly they are a major stakeholder in, in the vastness of the community, so they would be ideally to attend that session.
Okay, perfect. Then I would be happy to make that motion, then that we proceed with that meeting, hopefully before the end of June.
Okay, thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor? Okay, and second, Hydrogen Conference, so I'm going to make a motion to that we fund CEO Becker to attend the Hydrogen Conference in Edmonton at the end of April. I think it's very important and, and we need to be seen and we need to make connections in that important sector. Discussion? All in favor?
Sorry, one question. It's usually a question that we try to ask is if we use that out of contingency, where does that leave in contingency?
Mayor Barkley, through to Councilor Bates. We had about 72,000 before. I don't know the exact number, so if we take 35 off, so we'll be left with 68,500.
Well, then I think there's some already allocated to professional development, correct? Did you say there was about another 400 to 500 or something to come out of contingency, or does a whole amount come out? You know, it doesn't matter, but doesn't matter. It's okay. Sorry, I thought you said in CEO Becker in your report that there is already some allocation to kind of.
Yeah, it's, yeah. CEO professional development budget is geared towards such things as KAMA,
Yeah.
FCM and, and other educational opportunities.
Yeah, no, sorry, I must have misunderstood. I thought you said there was something already in the budget for this kind of conference, but.
No, there is not, Mayor Barkley.
Okay, fair enough.
Mayor Barkley?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, Counselor Harrison here. I fully support this motion. I, you know, there's so much buzz now around hydrogen sort of the fuel of the future, and I think we need to be at that table to make those initial contacts. So I fully support the, the further education and, and connection with our CEO and the Hydrogen Group throughout the province, so.
Councilor Highstead?
Yeah, Mayor Barkley, question, is this something that you, you may want to attend or want to send anybody else on council?
Just a question. I think this is a role for CEO Becker to go and make connections and, and, yeah, kind of get to meet the Hydrogen Hub Edmonton area and also have people from our community attending as well, so.
I fully support it.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, great, carried. And then Police and Safe Community Committee, there is a motion as well for the, was there, sorry? Yeah, the public education sessions, Councilor Highstead.
Your worship, I do, I do have a question in regards to CEO Becker's report, and it's just regarding the, the survey. And then just before the, the motions made for the, his report, so is that all right, your worship? Just a question. CEO Becker, thanks to this, Ken gave Counselor Maseros and myself these cards for getting out in the community for the survey. But I noticed, I think online, I noticed it was only until the 15th that, that survey, so I just wanted to check with both of you through CEO Becker and Communications that, is there an opportunity, if that's the date, to, to push that out so that we have more time to engage the public? And that was my question to you in your report today.
Mayor Barkley, the Councilor Highstead, I know there's some provisions with the RCMP on the dates to have their APP and a performance plan developed. We can certainly go back to the RCMP, Staff Sergeant Matta Chuck, to see when the file day could be, but is really based on their timeline. So if it's tight, we can certainly see we can extend that timeline.
Yeah, it just seems to me, and I, and I'll, I'll let my colleague Counselor Maseros comment, but it's, there's only four more days when I saw that online to, to get that out. So I just think the turnaround's really tight, and I think that if we can get a, you know, push it out a couple more weeks, I think that would help us if, if we can.
Okay, so other item is the, the police engagement. Did we want to have an engagement with, with respect to the RCMP and the Alberta Provincial Police Force Service, Safe Force Service? If so, we need a motion to move that forward.
I'd like to make that motion, Mayor Barkley.
Is that good enough, CEO Becker?
Yeah, just, I believe, Councilor Maseros to the motion that's recommended there.
Thank you. I'd like to move that, as recommended by the Police and Safe Community Committee, to host an Alberta Police Service Public Education Session with the intent of informing Innisville and area citizens of the Alberta provincial government's proposed Alberta Provincial Police Service.
Perfect. Any further comments? All in favor? Okay, carried. And then we also have the Police and Safe Community Committee, the approval for the wellbeing plan, Councilor Highstead.
As recommended by the Police and Safe Community Committee to approve the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan, scope of work and deliverers, deliverables.
May I ask a question about this? I guess through to CEO Becker, like, what do you, I guess, what are the outputs that we're looking for, the outcomes that we're looking for out of this? And, and can you give me some examples? And if the survey comes back and 95% of the community feels that they're safe, like, is that still something that we move forward with and?
Mayor Barkley, as for your question, I just, I'm just going to go down into the RFQ particulars on the deliverables. Basically, it's a, it's an engagement to pull data from, from the different stakeholders. And even though the community may feel safe as they outlined generally in our, so it's read study, there's still opportunity to pull in the resources and collaboration to ensure that we are focusing in on the highest priorities, such as mental health and addictions ties into housing. So that's an example of the data that exists, but we have not determined those, the data and put a plan towards that data. So basically, the data is going to dictate is, is to collect and assess the local data, not just the policing and health, but all the data. And then, so I'm just kind of going through the plan here, but it's developing a systems mapping to understand what current systems, program services exist and potentially what, within a map, what, what is, does not exist. And again, it's, it's a community engagement opportunity, just to pull in all those resources, because speaking for myself only, it's, when you think about community safety, we think RCMP, and it's largely well beyond RCMP. It's, it's a collective approach for public safety.
Oh, great. Do you know, are we part of the, the regional police and the, or the RCMP and the, the mental health unit? Like, there, there was an email that came and then it was retracted, but Innisville was now going to be part of that. It's RPACT. Okay. See how it was odd because email came and then right away, it got retracted from somebody, so wasn't true, so that's good to hear. Okay. So someone want, we have a motion on the floor, all in favor? And then we also need someone to approve the CEO report for today.
I'll make that motion, Mayor Barkley.
Thank you, Councilor Bates, all in favor? Carried. And we'll move into item 5.2, the Council Action Control. And we just need someone to make a motion, please, to accept this as information, Councilor Highstead.
Your, your worship, I will make that motion, but can I ask a quick question about the water rates piece? I, to CEO Becker, my question is, CEO Becker, did we go over that? Because it's not red. So I don't remember doing that. So I think I'm, I just want to make sure that I'm on same page as you.
It's probably make sure I'm on the same page as you. Vanity is doing just work. If you guys can just provide an update of where you're at and when council can expect that, that information.
Yeah, April, we have identified to come forward back to council in April. Now, we have a number of things going through that bylaw. So we'll go forward, not only the water meter rates, but a few other changes within that bylaw. So it'll be later April, if not May.
Okay, thanks. I'll make that motion to accept the CEO's report.
I actually need you to make a motion to accept the Action Control.
Action Control, sorry. I just, I'm all over the map.
It's okay.
Action Control.
Me, I'm too. No, it's good. Okay, all in favor? Carried. Okay, and we will move in, no, actually, 5.3, we have Councilor Highstead.
Yeah. I'll, I'll make this motion to, my motion will be to that we review bylaw 1140, policy bylaws. And I think that's what that bylaw is called, policy bylaws, 1140. It's the whole policy. So can I give some rationale first, and then I may be out to lunch on the policy itself? So last go around, we talked about Centennial Park, we had manager Leith in. And when I was talking about the bylaws on litter and stuff like that, under the council bylaw policies, it was 1140 with all the, the fines and stuff. So, so what I was looking at was, is a review. And so my understanding for good governance is, I bring forward the, the request, it goes on the ask, the action control, then we got it there to discuss. So am I, do I have the right bylaw?
Well, that, that's on today's. So I, I think what Councilor Highstead is referring to is just talking about the fines.
Yes.
That's attached to 1440 today, like with the, there's a, there's a list of fines attached to the park by law today. But is that, like, is that attached to every bylaw, that list of fines or everything where there could be fines? On the park use pilot program?
Apologies.
Bylaw 1440.
Yeah, so any bylaw that does have associated fines, they would be listed.
So to review it, to review it, would we?
It's 1440.
Sorry, do you want the fines reviewed?
Yeah, I just want to review the fines. That's the intent.
So do you want to review the fines? I guess we go through 1440 today, or is that separate, sorry?
If I could help, Mayor Barkley. So administration, actually, as previous council gave direction to update the community standards bylaw. So it's taken quite a while and it's, should be to you as early as next week. But darn soon, there's been a consolidation of the couple bylaws, community standards bylaw. And I can't remember the other bylaw, so it's better to do with community standard nuisance bylaw. So that's coming to you very soon with an updated fines fee schedule. Sorry, I, with just being out to the gen, I can't recite the parks bylaw nor the, the fee schedule. So I can't speak to that at the moment, but I can tell you items associated with Centennial Park and the parking lots may have affiliation with the community standards bylaw. I'm, I'm not certain.
Yeah, it, it's also in our package today, like with bylaw 1440 on the parks, there's a Schedule A penalties attached to it. While we're, we're going to get there eventually, but I'm just.
So my question, my question would be, it's coming, it's coming, the review is coming back to us, right?
The review of the community standards bylaw?
Yeah, the, the fines and all that, correct, 1440.
Actually, we have not received direction, Councilor, on 1440.
Or, so, yeah, I'm sorry, interrupt, 1440s today.
It's.
No.
Unless council gives direction to.
Yeah. Okay, but I, but I think it's a different, like, there's community standards bylaw. This different from this bylaw, then there's a nuisance bylaw. And I think what Councilor Highstead's wondering is like, where do the, where would the fines be reviewed, right?
Yeah.
If I may, council, for looking at littering and noise and that, the community standards bylaw. If you're looking at traffic infraction, so CPOs can apply community standards bylaw, they can apply the traffic bylaw. Those are two areas that they can use as tools to apply to enforcement of such issues, issues at Centennial Park. And that's forthcoming in the next few weeks.
So do you need further direction for that, or it's coming anyways? Or is there something specific, Councilor Highstead, that?
No, I, I, I knew that when manager Leith was here, he, he made the comment that it was going to be reviewed. The only reason why I brought it up today is to have it on the table, to have it on the action log, and to make sure that we're, that we're, because what I'm finding is, and this is just me, could be the rest of councils too, we've got so much going on, tracking it properly, if it's bumped down a month or two, it's not going to kill anybody, right? But I, I just wanted it to be noted as to littering, you know, the parks bylaw, stuff like that. So as to, I should have just talked to CEO Becker beforehand and just said, hey, I'm gonna throw you a curveball today. But so that's where I was coming from, so.
If I may, once again, to Councilor Highstead, there's been significant work done on the community standards bylaw and the nuisance bylaw to consolidate them that administratively, it's, it's in our radar, like, it's common, it's that close, or just wordsmithing the final pieces to it through council, sorry, Director Bickers and through, through Vanessa and Gary, so it's a full team approach on this. I mean, we, we reviewed it as senior leadership team a week ago. We'll take one more peek at it, but it's coming to you very soon.
Your worship, I can chill out and just wait, hold off. How's that? Does that work?
Can I ask a question first, though? So the penalties, the schedule, the penalty schedule that's attached to the bylaw that Councilor Highstead is talking about is consistent with, like, it's not an unusual schedule of penalties, it would be the same even if it showed up in another bylaw, or is there a specific set of penalties for the infractions in parks specifically?
Mayor Barkley, the Councilor, each bylaw has its own specific requirements for, in this case, fee penalties. Often when it's reviewed, it's evaluated against other bylaws that exist. On this one, I think it's 2006.
2006.
Six, so maybe outdated, but the intention is not to review, but if you're, as you get into that agenda item, you may say, you know what? This bylaw could use an updating, you can give that direction formally, if you wish.
I, I think we're good. If we're, if it's coming back in the next few weeks, I can, I can hold tight.
Okay.
Thanks.
Welcome, thank you. So we'll move into 6.1. Can we just maybe take a recess? Let's have somebody make a motion for recess.
I make that motion, Mayor Barkley.
Thanks, all in favor? Just take five.
Polls is closed in March, March twenty third, where we received four submissions. All the proposals were evaluated based on experience, price, material, and schedule. The scoring results, results are, are below and we're out of fifty points. Where we reward construction scored the highest at forty five points. The project includes a two hundred by eighty five concrete playing surface, four foot permanent steel framed boards, six foot chain link fence on the ends with four foot chain link fence along the sides. There's actually six twenty foot light standards with LED lights in the proposal. Total project would be three hundred and seventy two thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. And that includes a ten percent contingency and a value in there allotted for landscaping. This is under the estimated project budget of four hundred thousand dollars. Financial impacts is under, yeah, it's sorry, it's under the four hundred thousand dollar preestimate. Administration is recommending award of the project to Reward Construction Limited. So I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Director Kennedy, can we please have someone make the recommended motion?
I'd like to move that council approves the award of the new boarded outdoor rent contract to reward Construction Limited for three hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred dollars to be funded from the Woodlands Area Reserve.
Okay, thank you, any discussion?
Mayor Barkley, Counselor Harrison here.
Yes.
Thank you, just a question through Director Kennedy, have we chose a location for this new outdoor arena?
So the site plan is, is attached to with the document there, it is in, in location very near vicinity of the old outdoor ring. By placing it here, we have adjusted the proposed playground, just a little bit further west. But we went on and pre-stake the site there, it fits quite well there, fitting within that location.
Okay, thank you, just for the benefit of our viewers and people that are tuned in on Zoom here, just so, maybe they haven't read the package yet, so just, just a question, thank you.
Director Kennedy, is there any provision or there's not in this, but you know what, I hear feedback sometimes that there's no shelter for people to change their skates in, like at the Rincon fifty fourth, would that be something that we could look at potentially going forward? I know it's not part of this, but is there room for something like that down there and?
There, there would be room in between the playground and the outdoor ring there, if we did wanna look at a shelter in the future.
And then maybe later in the year when we get towards budget, I wonder if we can have a discussion about, you know, outdoor rink maintenance. And how, how that may work when we have something like this to look after on top of the other rinks at Centennial Park. And I know we've had some feedback, like it snows on a Friday and the outdoor rinks are snowy on the weekend, like who's going to look after them? Or, you know, is there an expectation that the town is going to now flood this on a Saturday and a Sunday or? Something to, to talk about in, in the months ahead. More questions, Counselor Bates?
Yeah, so you asked the one about the shelter, which was on my, as well, but I think we probably also should look for a spot for porta potty, would be my guess, if this becomes a popular, that I hope it would be. And I, I just have a question about the funding source. What, what originally or the Woodlands Reserve? What is that for, or what was it established for?
Yeah, I don't have the history of where that Woodland Reserve, area reserve fund was originally intended for.
How much does it leave in it, and do we continue to fund it or?
Remember, actually, that if it, I mean, it takes to Director Vickers, maybe that's something we can gather. I maybe postpone the conclusion of this report, so we can gather that information this afternoon and come back to you and conclude that and provide you that information.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't be comfortable approving it without knowing some of those details personally.
I do know it was, I saw that and I, in the report, Mayor Council, I apologize, I should have maybe gathered that. I did check back into the budgets, when you approved it, it did allocate at that time the Woodlands Area Reserve. But I think what we can do is maybe see if we can find a little bit of information as the meeting goes on and we can give you that information back.
Thank you.
So we'll just leave this item till later on. Okay, then we will move into six point two, request for decision on organics and recycling.
Thanks, Mayor Barkley. So purposes to review the collection and organics recycling service again. So the current service is provided by U three sixty S, who has recently provided us a quote to change the recycling service from manual pickup to automated. This would reduce the pickup cost per household by sixty cents per household, which would ultimately provide a savings of approximately nineteen thousand dollars per year. The cost for the blue, the new blue carts, including assembly and delivery, would be two hundred and twenty three thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars. Not including the GST. Delivery would be approximately two months from the placement of the order. It is anticipated that the metric tons of recycling will increase to the above change, but will conversely lower the garbage amount. Disposal cost for recycling is approximately eighteen dollars per metric ton higher than the garbage disposal cost. The cost, total cost is unknown at this time, but will be reported out at the yearly solid waste update. As per discussions at the April fourth AMP meeting, council wanted to review the Witcher Collection of Organics for organics, which is currently biweekly from November to May. If council would like to adjust the months and or frequency, we are asking just to provide direction and it's real formal motion on that. Administration will continue to complete the quarterly survey, survey on organics of approximately four hundred households per year. These walls, results will again be reported out at the yearly solid waste update. An amendment to the solid waste bylaw, two thousand nineteen sixteen twenty five will be required to update the residential collection section as well as reference to the recycling receptacles. This will be completed prior to the delivery of the new carts, if council is wanting to move forward with this change. Financial impacts, so currently we're, the solid waste reserve is at a hundred and sixty three thousand, seven hundred and four dollars. The balance for the purchase of the carts would come from the general capital reserve, which would be fifty nine thousand, four hundred and, or four hundred and eight dollars. We would continue to the existing transfer payment of thirty four thousand dollars from the solid waste reserve or revenue to the general cap reserve in order to pay off the purchase of the carts, which then puts the final payment of the purchase to twenty thirty one. Administration will provide notice to all residents for social media, town voice, and a notice through their utility bill if we are looking to move forward. I'll take on any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, we'll begin with a motion with respect to the recycling carts, if we would like to go ahead, there's a recommended motion there.
Make that motion. A recommendation that council approved changing the recycling pickup from manual to automated collection by E three sixty.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Highstead, any discussion? Counselor Bates?
She beat me. Well, I was just quickly looking at the funding again, and it's not that I'm always hung on that, but so the total cost is two hundred and twenty three. We're gonna take hundred and sixty three from the solid waste reserve and fifty nine from the general capital. And then there's a transfer payment of thirty four thousand, is that annually? So, it's only a couple of years to pay back what's taken from the general capital, isn't it?
Yep, Councilor Bates said, so that is correct, it's the initial purchase of the carts, so our original purchase of garbage and as, took us to twenty twenty nine to pay off, so we are still paying those off, this just adds two more years.
I'm sorry, I missed that connection, thank you.
Counselor Ring?
Thank you, Mayor Barkley, through to administration. So for our users, the cost per month for the change in the recycling bin will be, how much of an increase?
There will be no increase.
There'll be no increase, okay. And I just wanted that confirmed. And because we're essentially more than doubling the size, has there been any thought to only picking up biweekly on the recyclables? Or do we feel there's enough, enough substance to be able to do it on a weekly basis?
The recommendation is to proceed at a weekly, if council would like to look at that service, then, then we would, if we do so at that time.
Counselor Highstead?
Good, Counselor Wing, I think that is a good question, but I think when we, discussion at AMP, what I recall is that we were, we were looking at on a, on a weekly basis, because this is a lot of recycling currently, and, and I think it improves the recycling habits of our citizens. So I'm just glad that things are gonna be blowing around town as often, thanks.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table, all in favor? Okay, carried. And then there's a second motion. Somebody to make the second motion, we approve the financing of it.
I'll make that motion, Mayor Barkley. Or do you want me to read it? The council approves the purchase of the blue recycling carts for the amount of two twenty three hundred and twelve to be funded from the solid waste reserve and general capital reserve.
Perfect, thank you. Any discussion? You all in favor? And then I'm going to make a motion with respect to the organics that we know, act, well, actually, I would like you to bring back information, because I, just for cost, Director Kennedy, on expanding the weekly service from mid-April through to mid-November. Any discussion, Counselor Bates?
Would you include in that, Mayor Barkley, the potential to also reduce it somewhat in the winter time, the cycle of it, or?
Yeah.
We could look at all those options, cause maybe one would offset a bunch of the other.
May I reduce it to biweekly in the winter time? Or monthly, I should say, yeah, if it is biweekly, yeah. Okay. All in favor? Thank you. Okay, we will move on to seven point one, so request for decision on Economic Development Week with Manager Shaw. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So today we have before you a report dealing with the Economic Development Week, which is coming up in shortly from now, May ninth to the thirteenth. It's a week that's been used to celebrate economic development. It developed from twenty sixteen through the International Economic Development Council. Basically, it's a way to help promote economic development for municipalities. And so this year, we are asking that Innisfail put together a proclamation to recognize this week as the Economic Development Week, being May ninth to thirteenth. And we have a proclamation included as an attachment to the report.
Okay, thank you. Would somebody like to make that motion? I can't see Counselor Highstead and, or I can see Counselor Highstead, I can't see Counselor Harrison and and don't have anymore. Thank you. Somebody like to make that motion? That's before us.
So, move, Mayor Barkley. Counselor Harrison.
Yeah. Thank you. Any discussion? I guess I would just ask Manager Shaw, like during that week, are the plans for the, the town to have a, a lot of, I guess, promotion and social media activity going on and where we can celebrate Economic Development Week in, in the community and really showcase Innisfail?
Mayor and Council will be working with communications to put together a social media blitz, just to recognize that week.
And I also think you can, you can put this on to the Economic Developers Association as well, right? Where they will recognize us on, on their site and okay, all in favor? Great, thank you. And seven point two, request for decision on the park use pilot program with Director Jenkins.
Hey, thank you, Mayor Barkley. So looking for council discussion and consideration of two, two motions. So the town's current parks bylaw currently prohibits the use of park space to conduct business or commercial ventures. During the COVID nineteen pandemic, we looked at a pilot project to essentially waive that component of the parks bylaw to allow for businesses such as fitness classes, bootcamps, yoga, and other organized programs for which a fee is charged to operate within our parks, allowing more social distancing, that type of operation. So in twenty twenty one, we approved the pilot project, and administration is looking to request an extension of that pilot project, as we didn't have a lot of uptake last year to, for these types of I activities. But I do think there may be the potential, especially if we promote it a little bit more and have a look to, to see what, what can take place within our parks. At the time it was originally approved in twenty twenty one, the discussion was that we would look at the pilot program and then, following those results, look at a review of the parks bylaw itself as to whether it's something we'd like to make as a permanent change. So then, in, in concert with that, the town has been approached with a proposal to allow the rental of paddle boats for use on Dodds Lake. So this came from a private business. Curious if this is something that, that the town would entertain. So in order to entertain such a business, we would have to either extend the pilot project or look at, at an amendment to the parks bylaw. This type of business isn't necessarily the original intent of that pilot program. It was more sort of classes and, and those types of activities. But we wanted to bring it to council for some discussion and consideration of your thoughts on that type of commercial use within our public spaces as well.
Okay, thank you. So I would ask for someone to make the first motion, please.
Hey, Barkley. I'd like to do so. I'd like to recommend that council approves the park permit pilot program for twenty twenty two as presented.
Thank you. Any discussion over the program? Okay, all in favor? And then we'll have somebody make the recommended motion for item two, please. And then we'll have somebody make the recommended motion for item two, please.
Mayor Barkley, I would make the motion that council direct administration to explore the provision of rental equipment such as paddleboards, boards, or kayaks at Dodds Lake.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Wing. Guess I would have a comment about that. I'm a bit concerned about congestion. So I guess I would like to see kind of what the plan is to maybe have a little less congestion on the lake, around the lake. And I know there was issues, some issues last year with, you know, the carp fishermen and kayakers going by in the nine-meter poles and and stuff. So how how are we going to direct traffic and and keep away from accidents happening or people getting hooked with fishing gear and stuff like that? You know, I don't know if there's anything we can do, but. Councilor Highstead?
Yeah, your worship, I would agree with you. We need a, you know, we can look at this for sure. But a plan would be would be best. I know just being at the the trade fair. You know, I had a resident talk to me about the congestion and that. And I think it can be done in the right way and trust the the work of the administration. And I think that the plans that we do have are positive for the community. I really do. I think it's, I think this is a really good opportunity for our council to to really get a good plan for that area, not only there, but Centennial Park and other places in town. But I also think it's a good opportunity for us to have a good check-in with some of the residents on that, you know, in that area as well, so that they they do. I know when we were, you know, when we were getting ready for the election, I think a lot of us that were elected did talk about the respect of the citizens in that area and how we'd communicate with them. Thanks.
Thank you. CEO Becker?
Yeah, Mayor Barkley, just with the comments, so what I'm hearing is for clarity that you would like to have that information come back to you with kind of a Dodge Lake use plan or to include activities as per exploration of these types of activities listed here.
Yes. Councilor Mares?
Thank you, Mayor Barkley, through through to Director Jenkins. If we approve both of these motions, does that mean that does that automatically then assume that the business that has come to you for the paddleboards that that gets approval?
No, we'll need to go through the process of the the permit application for the the insurance, for the dates, for when they want to operate, which would also take into consideration of, you know, where they're going to locate to set up. They were all they're looking to when they're operating to have sort of an area of the lake kind of buoyed off where that's where the paddle boats would would circulate. But we didn't want to get too far in the planning conversation with with that potential business if it was something that that council was was not supportive of seeing move ahead.
Thank you. Councilor Bates?
Yeah, I would echo your comments, Mayor, and and Councilor Highstead, that we need to get it all together. And I think we need to look at the dock to how, you know, I guess we don't even know it right now, what we what we do or don't have in conjunction with the water ski club, which I believe we help finance, but we need to get all that stuff together and and look how it at how it's all going to work. And I do believe probably as soon as the ice is gone, we're going to start to see usage that that'll be over and about this. And the parking and all the other things that we've already talked about. So thank you.
CEO Becker, would you like a a motion around the dock and, you know, the direction to have dialogue with the water ski club and kind of get that settled? Because we even talk about it every year. We're kind of where's it at?
I believe, Mayor Barkley, that it's captured within this conversation on the use of the lake and how we're going to accommodate, you know, access and fishing and use. I think it's captured in that dialogue.
Fair enough. Okay, so we have a motion, everybody in favor? Okay, Carrie, thank you. We will move on to eight point one, request for decision on the twenty twenty-two regular tax bylaw.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. So yes, I am bringing the twenty twenty-two property tax bylaw. So annually, council is required to authorize tax rates sufficient to generate tax revenues to support municipal services based on approved municipal operating budgets. Parkland Foundation, based on requisition received. Education Services is also based on requisition received, as well as designated industrial properties. During our annual budget deliberations, administration recommended municipal tax rates for various residential and non-residential properties based upon assessed property values, the budgeted tax requirement, and other direction provided by council. At the December thirteenth in twenty twenty-one council meeting, council approved the twenty twenty-two operating budget with a twenty twenty-two tax requirement of just over eleven million dollars. And this was based on assessment estimates given to us by our assessor, Wildrose Assessments, in November of twenty twenty-one. In February of twenty twenty-two, we have received the final official assessments. And they are shown in the attached property tax estimate. And we are seeing an increase in assessment values of eight point three million dollars. And this get does give us a slight overall assessment growth of point seven five percent. So the budget, the twenty twenty-two budget did incorporate a two percent tax increase and the proposed, sorry, mill rates are set below. I did also attach a property tax comparison sheet to show the assessment changes in tax requirement of ten residential and ten non-residential properties. And this sheet does show multiple types of tax increases. So you can see the difference that it does make on those specific properties. Requisitions are collected by the town on behalf of Parkland Foundation and the province of Alberta. Those organizations each set their own mill rates and they are indicated below. So you can see for school, residential did go up a tiny little tiny little bit. But for non-res, it actually went down. And Parkland Foundation and the designated industrial properties or DIP, as they get referred to, both have stayed the same. Once by law, sixteen sixty-six dash twenty twenty-two. It's actually sixteen eighty, sorry. Has been passed, the twenty twenty-two assessment and taxation notices will be sent out. They'll be sent out by April twenty-first, and that gives residents sixty-seven days to file an appeal if they wish on or before before June twenty eighth. Taxes must be paid without penalty on or before the June thirtieth deadline. And we do have penalties. So January first is the first penalty, and that's eight percent on current outstanding. So that is only twenty twenty-two outstanding amount. Then we have a four percent on September first, which is also just a current outstanding amount. And then January first is a twelve percent on a total outstanding balance. So I did just put in a grid of of the revenues that we are receiving for each type. So we are actually seeing an increase in municipal tax revenue of sixty-two thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars due to that increase in assessment. And the school mill rates did change in twenty twenty-two after being frozen for the last couple of years. And we are seeing an increase in the school requisition as well for sixty-two thousand. And this won't affect our budget at all because it's just an in and we remit back out to the province. And the approval of this tax rate bylaw ensures that administration is able to issue the tax notices, which provide the total taxation revenues as shown in the twenty twenty-two operating budget that was passed by council. And again, we'll mail out the combined taxation assessment notices by April twenty-first. And we will also take additional notification via our current communication tools. We already have a schedule set up with Ken over what's going to be going in the voice and in the paper for for the next couple of months. And I'll take any questions. Other than that, I would like the tax bylaw to get all three readings today.
Okay, thank you, Director Pickers. Could I please have someone make the first motion? Councilor Highstead?
Your worship, I recommend that council accept and gives number one six eight zero dash two zero two two. Twenty dash two zero two two property tax bylaw first reading. Thanks. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Yeah, I think just a good reminder that this is the second tax increase since two thousand and fifteen. And I guess I would also ask Director Vickers if there's some communication going out along with this because people never like tax increases. But, you know, maybe outlining why. I mean, we have RCMP in increasing costs. I think that was around two hundred thousand. And, you know, we're not immune from inflationary pressures like the the rest of people are. So you know, just.
So, Mayor Barkley, we are we are doing, we call it a pamphlet that will go with the tax notice that indicates some of the projects that we're doing throughout the year and that kind of thing. This year, we're also actually building kind of what what does your dollar pay for kind of graphic that so for every dollar you're paying twelve cents to the police potentially or or whatever, so that we can show where their tax money goes, right?
It's great. Thank you. Any other discussion questions? Okay, all in favor? Okay, now have somebody please give the second reading.
Mayor Barkley, I would move that council accept and give sixteen eighty dash twenty twenty-two, the twenty twenty-two property tax bylaw second reading.
Okay, thank you. Discussion, all in favor? Okay, and then somebody please give consideration for a third reading.
Move that we give consideration for by law sixteen eighty twenty twenty-two, the twenty twenty-two property tax bylaw, third reading.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Okay, and then if somebody please give third and final reading to this bylaw.
I so moved, Mayor Barkley. We give third and final reading to tax bylaw.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Okay, and we will move into nine point one, request for decision on lost and unclaimed property policy with Manager Leaf. Welcome.
So the purpose is to provide a process for lost and unclaimed property. The town from time the town from time to time acquires lost and abandoned or unclaimed property as well as receives lost and unclaimed claimed and seize property from RCMP as per the RCMP process for disposal. The Municipal Government Act sets out provision for lost and unclaimed property coming into the possession of a municipality. If the property is not claimed within thirty days, becomes the property of the municipality, who may dispose of the property by public auction or how council directs. Note, a prior owner of lost or unclaimed property is entitled to proceeds, less all expenses incurred by the municipality if the owner makes a claim within ninety days after the sale. Protective Services currently provides secure storage for these items and periodically, based upon capacity, will be required to dispose of the appropriate items. Actions taken, Protective Services is to identify a company to auction off the the lost and unclaimed items. And the recommended motion is that council approves the lost and unclaimed property policy twenty-two dash zero zero four.
Right, thank you. Please have somebody make that motion, Councilor Bates. The lights on. Thank you.
I didn't shut my light off, but I will make I will make the motion that council approves the lost and unclaimed property policy twenty twenty-two dash zero zero four.
Thank you.
I do have a question.
Okay, question?
And I didn't turn it off. So my question is, only you would know what some of this stuff is like. Would there be some something that you can imagine that you might hold longer than thirty days before you liquidated it? Just
Historically, what's occurred is that certain items dependent on what they or what cases they relate to from RCMP are held for considerably longer. Because once it goes to court, the the judge then decides whether it is lost or claimed stolen property. If they're unable to prove that, it is actually returned to the person who potentially was charged. So there are certain circumstances where we're storing things for a significant length of time.
Okay, thank you.
So Manager Lisa, just a question with items. Like, do they all have to be auctioned off? Or if you had maybe some bicycles in there that you feel that could be given to kids in the community, like, is that something we can do or?
Based upon this policy, we would have to dispose of it as per the policy at auction. There would be opportunity for the town to to purchase those and then donate them back potentially if we should do that.
Mayor Barkley, through to Manager Lee. Please, I just was curious, how often do you have auctions on the material that you collect?
This will be the first time in the five years I'll be here. So, yeah.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, all in favor? Carried, thank you. And then second is request for decision on donation to Ukrainian firefighters.
To request council support in the donation of decommissioned self-contained breathing apparatus, the SCBA, as we refer to it, to the firefighter aid Ukraine. Background is that firefighter aid Ukraine is a nonprofit organization with a project to send firefighting equipment, life rescue, medical supplies to the Ukraine. Members of Red Deer Emergency Services are coordinating local fire departments to provide donations of equipment, which will be taken to Edmonton before being delivered to the Ukraine. This equipment will be used to replace damaged and or destroyed equipment. Innisfail Fire Department in twenty twenty-two budget include capital expenditure to replace breathing apparatus on units. The aim is that the replacement and in-service testing is going to be completed by the last week in April. The decommissioned units will be disposed of as they have little or no resale value and with within twelve months of their expected life expectancy. Actions taken, the the new M seven SCBAs will be placed in service and tested completed by we commence in April eighteenth, and that will free up that decommissioned equipment then to be moved if permission given to donate. So the recommended motion is that council approve the donation of decommissioned self-contained breathing apparatus to the UK Ukraine through firefighter aid Ukraine.
Hey, thank you. Wonderful initiative. Councilor Wing?
Yes, Mayor Barkley, I would like to make that motion.
Okay, any discussion, Councilor Bates?
Yeah, I fully sport it. I just curious approximately how many units that might be in the short term.
That'll be eighteen full units, including over thirty cylinders.
Councilor Highstead?
Your worship, to Manager Lee. Is there anything else we can do besides the the units as well?
Basically, they had a bit of a grocery list is the best way to describe it. We do have other additional equipment there that we could provide to them. But right now, this is what they're looking for. So we're we're filling that need and off that grocery list, so to speak.
Thank you. All in favor? Okay, Carrie, thank you. Okay, we will move into correspondence, ten point one. Lots of correspondence. I guess the number two, the Alberta Public Works Proclamation, I guess we need motions for all these. So if somebody would like to make a motion that we declare Public Works Week, May twelfth to twenty-first.
I'll make that motion, Mayor Barkley, that we declare Public Works Week, May twelfth to twenty-first.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Carrie, I hope you're keeping track. Then then we have a letter from Alicia Fox from RPAP. So the glasses on, sorry, there's the Rural Health Week is. The Rural Health Week is. What's what? What are the dates? So May thirtieth to June third. So could I have somebody please make a motion that we declare May thirtieth to June third Rural Health Week?
I'll make that motion, your worship.
Thank you, Council Heistad. All in favor? And we've got the letter, of course, acknowledging our CAO and just thirty years of service. Congratulations, Todd. And we've got some keep information in there about. CC West Project. RCMP retroactive pay. So that's something to take note of saying that that pay will not. Have to be paid this year, but also don't spend it, I'm assuming. So that's good news that those discussions are still going on. Of course, some men shed, they had seven people out last week for their first man shed, which was a great turnout. Bring your attention to item ten point one, the email from Colin Bushman with respect to the National Police. Federation and this letter is about whether we want to add our name as a community onto their. Onto their letter that they're sending. And I think they needed to know that by April fifteenth, I believe. So I don't know if Council Heistad, maybe you've had that discussion.
We have. Do you wanna comment? Our discussion was, I know that the committee is is fully on board with the RCMP and fully supports. The RCMP, what we want to do with the the survey and and community engagement was to have both. Programs come in so that we're. Giving two points of view, but as to council, that's, you know, I guess that's the question. Do we? Do we wait for those presentations? Because. Or do we go ahead with it? I know where I stand on it personally with the RCMP. As a, you know, constituent and and a council member, but I know that when we discussed it, we wanted to make sure that both. Presentations were given to the community.
Yeah, yeah. And I think, you know, that's what we need to decide right now, right? As council, do we want to move forward with this? I know RMA last week said that they are supporting RCMP Alberta municipalities, of course, is supporting RCMP. Or at least didn't like the proposal from PWC, so. You know, if we don't do this, and I don't know that we're, I'm not sure CEO Becker, if you have any more information about this or once this is. This part is done, it's done. And so.
What I could suggest, just off the cuff, remember actually is council, I think his previous council sent a letter to the premier.
Yes.
And others regarding that support to RCMP, we can certainly provide a cover letter stating that the town's already supported. This initiative and it really confirms your US Council, your dedication to the RCMP. But maybe not directly affiliated into this initiative.
Okay. Yeah, I think something should come from this council.
I would agree with that. My question would be the request from the National Federation is asking that we include our logo that. Logo then that they would include in their materials. So by sending them a letter saying, these are the things we have done. Are we also prepared then to say, please do not use our logo?
I guess the question would be back to council, do you want to participate in the call to action this program? So if you do, then you're stating that the logo go there. But if you're clearly stating that we support the RCMP. And we are deciding not to go into the call of the action program, that that's the message of not using the logo.
I would be fine as long as that message is really clear. And we can talk about, we want to consult our community. But I think at this point in time, my feeling would be. Not supporting the call to action, but certainly supporting the RCMP.
Yeah, and I think when you look at the bottom of the letter that he has attached that they're going to be sending. So what they're asking for is improve current policing to address response times. Improve social services to address the root process of crime and increase resources within the justice system. I think those are all the things we heard about at Alberta municipalities too, right? It's not just the policing issue. There's so much more to it than that. So.
I've got a question, Mayor Barkley. I'm not sure I understand why we wouldn't make a motion to join this call to action.
Yeah, we can. We just need a a motion to join the call to action and then we can, we can have a vote on it.
I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, okay. So there's a motion on the table to join the call of action. Any further discussion? I'm going to support Counselor Miss Harris in this. I think that I think I know where I stand on this issue. And I totally agree with these points at the bottom of this letter. That's going to be going to the the premier. Counsel Heistad.
Your worship, just listening to the discussion and. Counselor Wang brought up some good ideas. I'm going to support it as well. I I think the reason why I brought up. The the presentation and giving both sides. I think the committee wanted to do that for the the community. I just, the committee was pretty dedicated to this, you know, this, I'm not speaking to this letter, but to the RCMP. So I'm I'm fully comfortable supporting it, not only as an individual, but with. The kid committee support. I just want to make sure that we were clear in any communication that the community would have. Both sides.
Oh, absolutely.
And that's, that's the big thing is, I think RMA and AMA have done a great job and and I'm fine with this. Thanks.
Yeah, I fully agree with that. Counselor has said it's really important that the community gets to understand because we're not going to be able to see the. Price Waterhouse side of things unless we do it. And I think it's really important that that they hear both sides and see what it's all about. Anyone else? Okay, so we have a motion on the table from Counselor Miss Harris, Counselor Dunham and Harrison, nothing. Okay, so all in favor? Okay, carried. And then next we have a email that came in from Bob McNaught with respect to speeding. So I don't know, did you want something out of this? CEO Becker.
Remember, I did follow up with Mr. McNaught, and he's happy that this letter just came to council's attention. It was circulated into the enforcement side.
Okay, thank you. And then we've got some information from municipal users group. See how dry things are in central Alberta. We've got an invite to the Bowden Days Parade. We're getting into parade season. So I think as council, we need to determine how many. Parades we want to go to. Certainly, we'll participate in Innisfail. I don't know about the other ones, but. It's a little bit busy and it takes resources, right, to get to other communities to do these things. So. Anyway, it's there and we can talk about it at another time. And here the garden is next. So we need a motion to proclaim year of the garden. Counselor Bing.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. Yes, we have certainly been discussing the year of the garden for the past several weeks. Admin is supportive of some of the opportunities that it provides for the work that they do, and we can certainly bring the community. To this conversation as well. So I would like to move that council proclaim twenty twenty to the year of the garden. Joining a national program that celebrates the environment beautification and the horticultural industry in Canada.
Perfect. Thank you. Discussion. Okay, all in favor?
Mayor Barkley, I'd like to suggest something. There's a lot of information in the River Forecast Center, twenty twenty two water supply outlook. There's a lot of dense data put into charts and graphs. I was wondering if we could invite them to come in to give us a presentation.
Mayor Barkley through to counselor. That's a great idea. And I've talked with the exact director there, and he's prepared to come at any time that we have a formal request. So maybe a motion for that to direct administration to set that up.
It's great. Thank you. Do you want to make that motion, Council?
I'd like to make a motion that administration set up a presentation from this organization.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Okay, that's the end of correspondence. Yeah, that's a lot, wasn't it? That's good. And then we'll go into council reports. So Counselor Maseras, you're up.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Barkley. So last week I attended the Red Deer Catholic School Board Trustees Meeting. That was very interesting. And went to the first session of the Understanding Hate and Extremism. Webinars, which was also very interesting. Second one is tomorrow. And attended the extended producer responsibility session on Friday. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Wing.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. Yes, I also, I appreciate appreciated the opportunity to meet with Red Deer Catholic School Division trustees and superintendent. Certainly, conversations with our partners are like this are very important. So I look forward to more of them. I attended a virtual presentation from the Energy Futures Lab on hydrocarbons in a net zero environment. It was the launch of a new white paper that's titled Same Game New Rules: How Policy Can Unlock Future-Fit Innovations in Alberta's. Hydrocarbon sector. It was very, very interesting and certainly some, I think, some game-changing kinds of ideas in that paper. Also attended the virtual EPR information session number one on Friday and look forward to the next one in June. This week I had season meeting tomorrow with Senator, with Senator Paula Simons. And a public works tour on Wednesday and the Alberta Board Meeting, the April Board Meeting of the Innisfail Chamber of Commerce. Just a reminder, I will be away for the next couple of weeks. However, I will be attending via Zoom.
Thank you. Counselor Bates?
Yeah, I know we usually skip Counselor Heistad, but it looks like we skipped Counselor Dunham. Do you want to do I catch him at the end or? Okay. So I also attended the Catholic School and Board Engagement and. This past weekend, I had the opportunity to visit the Seven Chiefs Recreation Center Center at the Sussina. Nation and watch the interprovincial Canadian Championships of Ringette. And that was. Amazing facility, amazing sport and a real experience. Congrats, CAO Becker, for your achievement. And this week on Wednesday, I have the Mountain View Water Commission, both the AGM and the regional meeting, and then later some. Tours, I think if they materialize of of some of our facilities and. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're coming to you, Counselor Dunham and Harrison, but Counselor Heistad.
Yeah, um. Catholic School Division last week. Got Senator Paul Simons. Tomorrow and then the the big thing that I want to say is I know that we're, you know. Counselor Miss Errolson and I are trying to get some of this committee stuff, police committee stuff out this week. And if we can get a bit of an extension with working with the RCMP, that'd be great. And looking forward to tomorrow's engagement session. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dunham.
Barkley, last week was fairly quiet for me. I did attend the online understanding of extremism, which I found very informative. And as well, I'm looking forward to the second one tomorrow. And that's pretty much it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. I also attended the Net Zero via webinar on April the eighth. And what I took away from that is they were talking about, it's not an either or or. When it comes to hydrocarbons and where we're headed with alternate green fuels. So I think it's going to be a matter of time, but we need to start looking. And this is why I fully supported our CAO going to. The hydrogen conference. It's just a matter of how quickly that we can get to these alternate fuels. There was some indication that insurance companies are are floating balloons that they they won't be insuring. Hydrocarbon industry over time. So that was an interesting comment. I also attended the Catholic School Board Meeting and very informative. And the EPR via Zoom was quite informative too. And I'm also right now sitting in Calgary at the ASHA. Convention and we had a very good opening keynote speaker in the name of. Andrew Kreen. And he was a gold medalist in rowing. And also he rode from or rode with his three teammates to. From Africa to Miami. And he talked about that journey and how it is inspired him in his personal life. So a very good keynote speaker. And I hope to get back to some of the presentations after council meeting this afternoon. So thank you very much, Mayor Barkley.
Well, thank you very much. And I as well attended Red Deer Catholic last week. And also the Energy Futures Lab, Hypercarbons Presentation. The Extended Producer Responsibility. And I do have a question that came out of that. I know we have a hazardous waste round upcoming. I believe it's May seventh. Where does that go direct to Kennedy?
In regards to where the waste goes? So we have. Clean harbors, yeah, they they organize and then dispose. So I don't know where they dispose of it, but it does clean harbors are the ones that take care of it.
So either you or CEO Becker, like, can you explain more about extended produce responsibility and how? That may impact our communities in a positive way. I mean, I I'm thinking maybe not so much hazardous waste, but more so. From. You know, just everyday waste that like, is there more? My understanding is there's going to be more. Initiative put back on the producer to either. Get different packaging or be responsible for paying to clean up some of their. Their waste.
My birthday, that's my understanding is that in just simple terms, that there is a responsibility back on. At least partially back on the one producing that material. How they do that, I haven't got that far into. This initiative, but it's a, it's really, it's been on the backs of municipalities to to really deal with. With the product taxpayers and spin it back to the corporate responsibilities.
Yeah, I'd be curious to know if, I mean, no rush to to find out like where does the hazardous waste go and. And I think at one time maybe Swan Hills, but I'm not sure that is still open or not. So. And then I also participated in the Economic Developers Association Conference virtually for a couple of days. It was very good on my. You know, every time I participate in something like this, I see how important it is for Innisfail. To be there, to be in person at these things, which is why I'm so supportive of CEO Becker going to. The hydro hydrogen conference in Edmonton, there was a hundred and twenty elected officials at EDA. Other, it was sold out at four hundred was the cap. So there was a hundred and twenty elected officials, approximately a hundred and twenty-ish. Economic developers and then others. Now, there was people there from agribusiness, so Alberta Pulse. Growers as an example, of course, energy, manufacturing, life sciences, tech and digital transformation, aviation, aviation logistics. And. There's a lot of things happening in Alberta, and I think there's a lot of connections to be made and a lot of relationships that we need to develop. And you can see how competitive of an environment it is to attract any kind of business into your community. So I would really encourage us as we go forward, maybe into this next year's budget, that we look at those kind of things. Where where we can put some more funding towards being there in person and participating in these kind of initiatives are so important. And the other thing I wanted to bring up, CEO Becker, if you wanted a motion with respect to. Sean Collins and bringing him into council at some point or is that? I can give a little bit of background if you want.
Yeah. I think it's part of your, bring that up, remember, actually, is probably explain Sean Collins, he doesn't then see.
To decide. So Sean's a top forty, under forty. He was a founder of Terrapin Geothermal. He raised forty three million dollars for that. Company. He then is co-founder of studentenergy.org. So it's an organization which. Is based all over the world. Last summer, he received, they received a hundred and fifty million dollars in funding from the United Nations. And governments such as Denmark. And so they work with students, university-age students to. and governments such as Denmark, and so they work with students, university-age students to um do energy efficiency projects all across the world. He also has started his own company, uh lives in Edmonton, and um I met Sean through the Next Thirty Organization. I spoke with him a few times, caught up to him last week because we hadn't spoke with a while, told him some things that were going on in Innisfail. Uh also about our active strategy and um, you know, kind of that energy focus in it, and and he would be very willing to come in and and speak to council about some of the work he does and initiatives that he sees in his travels, and there's also a potential that Student Energy got some funding from Prairie Cans, so federal government, and they the Student Energy Organization did a project at Nate, so they put in a small renewable energy array. And uh the power that Nate saves from that, they then pay that dollar amount back to Student Energy. It's about nine hundred dollars a year, so we had a brief discussion about them possibly potentially coming into Innisfail, and maybe there could be some kind of a student energy project we could do in the community here on one of our municipal facilities. It would be small, but it would be kind of a cool project to get the schools involved in and and um, you know, again, kind of highlight that energy efficiency and and um energy portion of our economic development plan. So if you would like him to come and present to us, I think you would find him extremely interesting and worthwhile. He's a ton of information and and a very, very bright person. He was also the fundraising manager for Amherst Sohe, and they got the most donations in that campaign, the number, the most number of donations in the history of a mayoral candidate in Edmonton. So he's a go-getter. And uh lots of fun to to speak with. Would you like a motion?
Sure.
Okay, well, I will make a motion then that we ask um administration to bring Sean Collins, whether it's via Zoom or in person, to speak to council around uh energy efficiency and a studentenergy.org in the near future. Like next week, I don't know what's the date, April. Well, he he only has three fundings left, right, for the Prairie Scan, so they've already have seven hundred and ten. They they have ten um ten grants to to give out on on the uh the Prairie Cans funding, so they've only got three left of that, so I think the sooner the better would be advantageous to us.
Your worship. I I think it's great. I think it's really a great initiative. Um is this uh is this just for us? Like, is it an in-camera thing, or is, do we want to, I I really think this uh individual um from what I know, has done some really cool things. Is this something that we'd want to zoom out there to everybody? I don't.
No, it would be in public.
Yeah, I think it'd be kind of cool to promote that, really promote that.
I think in like an AMP meeting, he could.
Yeah.
And uh either like I said, in person or or zoom in from Edmonton, whatever suits him him best, but yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. No, I think people would uh anyway, that's all I have. I made a motion, I did, yes, all in favor? Okay, thanks for reminding me what I did.
Mayor Barclay, uh we do have our in-camera delegation uh waiting.
Okay.
Um I I know we need to circle back to on the Victoria Arena project, but I may suggest if we could go into the in-camera.
Sure. Okay, I'll make have a motion then, please to go in camera. Okay, thank you, Counselor Wing, all in favor? Thank you.